And we're going to be calling to the meeting to order. I will apologize for the tardiness. And we will do a roll call. I will take note that everyone is here with the exception of Jay Gross. Move on to item number two, three, and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item, number four, on the agenda is to review, deliberate here, and consider and act upon the resolution that was sent to us by the Board of Selectmen. I think that the last meeting, we came to a consensus on all of the items except for one. So how I envision today's meeting to go is to have Attorney Mednick kind of go over article by article, the changes that were made in terms of when we approved a concept, he was going to develop language that we have seen, just to highlight that, to make sure that we're all still in agreement that we approved to in concept pending language. And then we will, when we get to item number six, I believe it was, in terms of the RTM, we will decide on that matter. Is there any comments from the Commission on how to proceed? There might be a better way. I'm open to that, but, okay. All right. So without further ado, Attorney Mednick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what I'm going to do is run through article by article, if I can, is it on? Yeah. Yep. Anthony. The, is go through article by article. And let me explain up front, a couple of things. There are a couple of errata documents, items that just go throughout the entire document. The town attorney and I both came to the conclusion that the constant references to, when we have a reference, an internal reference to a section of "of this charter," was really unnecessary. So you'll see throughout this document that we have deleted the phrase "of this charter." There is, in one of the footnotes, I think 14, a reference to that. So if there's an internal section reference or provision reference that is not otherwise stated, it is a charter reference, so that we knock a number of those words out. But as to the substance, the first substantive item was the definition of contract in 1.4C5, where we deleted the phrase "including the Board of Education." Should we stop on the substantive items, or should I just run through the whole thing?
No. I think that if you just highlight them, and if a member has an issue, if you could just please, you know, raise your hand or holler out, then we'll stop.
All right. So that's the first substantive issue. The next, it's not a substantive issue, but it was a clarification. I think, I don't remember where it came from. I think I might have done it myself, or was raised in a comment. I added to the definition of elector, when used in this charter, this term would be synonymous with the term elector of the town. Just wanted to make sure, I think you brought it up, actually, the Vice Chair, I brought it up, and I wanted to make sure everybody understood that I put that clarification in there. In 15, there's a clarification on notice. Again, I explained last week, it's not a significant item or a major item, but it does clean up a couple of things, make sure what the town clerk's responsibilities are, both in 15 for meeting or hearing notice, and 17 for public notice or publication. It does provide some more clarity with regard to those important definitions. And remember, those definitions are critical, because we took all the notice provisions that were strewn throughout the charter out, and everything refers to these two provisions. You'll see when we get to the RTM, I added some language back in that was sourced from the same, the same issue that was raised. The next change is in 1.5, no, 1.6B, in public meeting decorum. We added to that, the RTM and other public bodies and various community groups, including committees, task forces, or other like entities created pursuant to 4.2B4C, which is under the Board of Selectmen. Those are the groups of limited duration.
If you could, at the next pause, I see Selectman Flynn has his hand raised. I didn't know if, I did.
Yeah. Thanks. I was wondering why, or if we could start, I thought you guys were going to start with the RTM tonight, and that was going to be the first discussion point. I do have a hard stop a little bit later this hour, due to a conflict that came up.
Okay.
But I was surprised to see you didn't start with that. That's all.
We just have two more items in this article. Shall we finish this article?
Okay. Well, good, we'll proceed to that right after this article, then.
Similar change, so that was B, where we included all the task forces. We also did the same thing in 1.7A, to make sure the task forces, committees, and other like entities are subject to the record-keeping requirements. And in 1.7B, one of the requests that came from Selectwoman, I'm sorry, Lefkowitz, thank you, was adding the RTM to that.
Can't be that hard to forget.
I think of Louis Lefkowitz, and I couldn't think even of Louis Lefkowitz to remember the name, so the former Attorney General of New York, many, many years ago. I added RTM here. There's a section on open government in the RTM provision, and I think the request was to move, move it out there where it was just being redundant, and move it into this section, which actually is now the amalgam of three or four different sections in the document. So those are the, and then finally, and I don't think there are any changes here, but this is the language on diversity in 1.8. And I don't know if there are any questions on that, but I think that the language was not changed, but this is the first time you see the language in the body of the document. And that's all I have for Article One.
So does anyone have any questions or addition comments to Article One? Okay. So at the request of Selectman Flynn, we are going, and without objection from the other Commissioners, I want to move to number six on the resolution.
Article Three.
Which would be in Articles Two and Three.
Yeah.
About reviewing the issue pertaining to the number of RTM members. And on that, I would like to make a motion to revise the, our recommendation to make the number of RTM members 40, which is the current actual number of RTM members serving on the RTM, and I would be seeking a second for that, and then would entertain any discussion.
I'll second your motion. I may make an amendment to your motion at the appropriate time, but I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? I think if.
Do you kind of think I know where it might go?
Sure.
So I would, I'm not going to get into the reasons why. We've talked about this for the last five months, and we've heard a lot. My motion, it's an amendment to your motion, would be to keep the current charter language found in Section 2.6, which allows the RTM the ability to set its own size. And that would be my amendment to your motion.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second for the purposes of discussion.
Okay. All right. Well, then I will entertain discussion on the amendment to the motion. So this would be keeping the original language, essentially.
Right.
Number 256.
And then if it, if it happens to pass, I would show the, where that language would go in the updated charter.
It's not to go to the 56, it's to have them make the decision on the size up to 40?
No. It's an amendment, so my understanding is the whole RTM issue is, Board of Selectmen sent it back to us. And we could say, if we wanted to, as a Commission, that we don't want to change anything, right? So essentially, my amendment to, my amended motion is requesting that. That's, it's been seconded, so.
That you go back to up to 56.
Up to 56. Keep, keep the same language that we have in the current charter under 2.6.
So it dates the underlying motion. Okay.
Right, right.
All right. I wasn't sure about that. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
So there, the districts are not on the table.
Right. Well, I'm just saying that it's stated that it's 10 districts, so how would you have 56 in 10 districts?
Well, that's a great point for discussion.
Well, I thought, my, my understanding is they go hand in hand, those sections, so.
This isn't before the body, if I may, on a parliamentary level, because it was not raised by the Board of Selectmen.
So just so I understand, only the size has been raised? Okay. And that's what, if the Chair is going to rule that way, then I'll accept it, and I'll withdraw my amendment. Thank you.
Did you want to withdraw your second?
I will withdraw my second.
Okay. All right. So then, the motion then that is on the floor that has been seconded is to, in response to the Board of Selectmen's resolution, item number six, with reviewing the number of RTM members, is to change our recommendation from 30 to 40, which is the current membership of the RTM. And let me just say, from my perspective, and why I'm making this motion, is because I think that a lot of good work has been done. We've had, heard a lot of arguments on both sides, but at the end of the day, in looking at this body's work and the recommendations as a whole, to move it forward, I believe as a group, we're better served at moving it forward as 40. So that's where I'm at. So I would, I'd entertain any other points, or John?
Yeah, thank you. And I, I agree with what you're saying. I mean, obviously, I would have preferred to leave it alone, but I understand the direction of this Commission. Just to be clear, all we're doing here is where it says 30, we're going to replace it with 40.
That's my motion.
Nothing else is changing.
Okay.
All right. I think that, I think that's a good compromise, and I, you know, I think the citizens will support that. Thank you.
I think we have a point of order. Do you?
That's 40 with a cap at 40, correct?
Yes. It is not, excuse me. The language, our, our language doesn't say a cap of 40. It says, it sets it, right now it says, sets it at 30. The motion is just to replace that to 40, not a cap at 40. And so, and so.
I think the only way it could be changed is by charter revision.
Right. And so in 10 more years, which, when this will happen again, some other Charter Commission can take a look at this and see if they want to go in that direction. That way, we don't get the, and Pam knows, is the agita of the RTM every few years on the redistricting, butting heads about that. We have some certainty over the next 10 years. We maybe do it sooner, charter revision, and I think people would be comfortable with that.
Is that, all right, is that clear and comfortable? Okay.
Yes, that's clear.
Any other comments or discussions on this matter? Mr. Vice Chair.
This is Tom, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've thought a lot about this. There's been a lot of good discussion on both sides, a lot of good reasoning, especially by our fellow Commissioners last week. I think, as somebody said, at the end of the day, you're not going to come up from some nugget of data, or, or whatever logic that's going to say, uh-huh, and that's what it should be. My own personal, I was on the RTM for five years, it was 50 then, that was way too big. I personally think a 30 would be better for the town, but that's, as a voter of the town, that's what I feel, and I know there's, I've talked to people, there's people in town, some of whom are very knowledgeable of government, who feel that way, but honestly, I think the difference between 30 and 40 really isn't that big. The biggest determinant of how the RTM is going to work is the leadership and the people on it, and if they want to have a good and effective RTM, they can do it with 30, 40, or 50, actually. So given that, and given sort of the mood of the town, I am willing to go and approve the 40. I would hope, as we put it in our transmittal letter, that somebody does look at the ongoing, look at our town structure, and whether it is the right structure for all the challenges we're going to have, climate, housing, crime, I mean, everything, transportation, infrastructure, all that stuff. And the data you're going to have to look at is not just all these charts and whatever other town, you got to go out to other towns, here and across the country maybe, and see what they're doing. And maybe we're doing great on everything, which would be great, maybe there's things we could do differently. And that's my only concern as I look forward for Fairfield, is that we really are in a position, ahead of time, to address the challenges, the very complex challenges that are with us now and are continuing to come up. But I will agree with the motion to go to 40.
And I think that, Selectman Flynn, you had a comment.
Yeah, my apologies. I think Mr. Brogan, with his comments regarding the makeup of the RTM, 30, 40, 50, summed that up very well. And, and his commentary regarding leadership of the RTM, elected officials on the RTM, and how that body can operate, so I, I agree with him, and I would support 40. I also want to recognize the work that was done in trying to answer the questions that I brought forth, and I do appreciate the effort, and I very much appreciate the hard work and diligence that your committee put in on this issue. There's no right or wrong answer on this. It was a good debate, and I, kudos to you all for having it, and I, and I thank you for that. I also hope we don't wait another 10 years. I think we've got to constantly evolve and review. And thank you for your efforts on that, and I'll support 40, should it come to us in that way.
Selectwoman Lefkowitz, did you have any comments?
Just to echo what's just been said, and I agree wholeheartedly, first and foremost, thank you to the Commission for the continued work and effort that's gone into this, and appreciate the, the debate and the conversations and the questioning, and do appreciate the work that has gone into it. I do agree with Selectman Flynn, that ongoing, and Mr., and Commissioner Brogan, that ongoing review and, and a look at how our town is functioning, and the various commissions and the boards. It would be a shame if it waited 10 years to have another sort of deep dive into this, but, but also will support that 40 number, and think that the, the public has, has spoken out in both directions, but I do think that it seems clear that we are going where the public wants us to go at this moment, and, and I support it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. First Selectwoman, Kupchak, did you?
Thank you. And I just, I don't think my, my position on this is any secret. I've been pretty open about how I thought we should make some, some changes, but I recognize, and I do appreciate the comments from the Commission, especially Vice Chairman Brogan, for looking at both sides of it, but understanding that, you know, this may be a hill too high to climb for our community. And I understand that as well. And like I said to you all last week, I thought the work that you've done has been really good. This document is good, and it's way better. I know I sound like a little kid, right? It's way better than it was before, but it is. It's a better document, and I'd hate to have an item like this hold up all that hard work. And I want to be, you know, I want to work alongside my two Selectmen, and they obviously have concerns with it, so I will join them in supporting the 40 as well. So thank you again.
Thank you very much for all the comments from everyone. I really appreciate them. And it has been a long and very, very substantive debate. I support everything that the Commissioners have said here. I am going to vote in 30. I do want to be on record that this needs to be revisited, you know, and I, I'm disappointed that this became such a political hot-button issue, that we weren't able to put it in front of the voters, to let them be the ultimate arbitrators of it. And that's okay. I, I accept that. I don't want to lose anything out of the good work that was done here. But I do think that we would be a much better governing body, and much more accountable to the people, if we could get down to a smaller size. So it's been a long and very healthy debate, and I will be voting no on this, but I do think, in the interest of moving it forward, I understand why it's happening.
Commissioner Win.
Thank you. I also will be voting against the motion to go to 40. I think 30 is the right number, for, you know, many of the reasons that we've talked about. I agree with all the comments that Vice Chair Brogan made, and Selectman Flynn, and everybody else that had part of the conversation here. I do appreciate the feedback from everybody, both the people in the town, the people on this Commission, the people on boards. Two or three good things that I see coming out of this debate, because I can guess where the vote might go right now, hopefully, we'll be less partisan as a town. Hopefully, we'll be more thoughtful and analytical, and make good decisions, using good information around town operations, around schools, about redistricting, around capital projects. And everyone in town, on both sides of the political spectrum, have made it clear that they're watching what our town boards and commissions are doing, and they want better governance, regardless of the size of the body. And I think everyone's going to be watching the role that the RTM takes, the role all the boards and commissions, the role the Board of Selectmen take, and that's a good thing. Watching and holding the elected people accountable for the actions that they take, I think, is a very good outcome of this whole situation. Thank you.
Chairman Caprilli, can I jump on that comment?
Please.
I, I just want to say, on the heels of what Commissioner Win just said, I think it's the most salient thing that's been said, and I appreciate that comment, which is that the community and residents of the town really are paying attention, and they do care. And I think that's a great takeaway, because ultimately, I think the lion's share of the arguments for or against have not been political. I think it's that people are questioning and probing in all the right ways, and I think, at the end of the day, I hope both the Commission and we as elected leaders can feel good about the robust participation that we've had, and we have to keep holding ourselves to high account, and I just wanted to thank Commissioner Win for those comments.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commission? No, I, I echo a lot of what's been said just now. Again, I want to give a thanks to Pam and John for the yeoman's work they did on putting together a lot of data and responses to, to some questions that were raised, to kind of further explore and support the theory of a smaller RTM. And at the end of the day, I think that this is a good place to be. I would really encourage everyone to Commissioner Brogan's point, to reread our transmittal letter, because I think it's laid out pretty clearly there, that something of this magnitude does need a little groundwork laid before a Commission is impaneled. That's what we've discovered, not just that, you know, that the public, you know, has a thought on one number, it's just to kind of look at it a little more holistically would take a little more time and depth that Commission just doesn't have the capacity to do. So, again, really appreciate everyone's work on this. And with that, I would take a vote on this. So all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. So we can resume with Article Two.
Commissioner, and I, and I don't mean.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for taking that order. I appreciate that.
And since, first select person, first Selectman, Selectman Flynn speaking right now, I, when is your hard leave, Mr. Flynn? Because I have something I wanted to raise, which I think you addressed under Section Four, and I want to make sure he's here.
Okay. All right. Without objection, we'll take up Section Four.
And I'm sorry about going out of order.
No, this is, as long as we get there.
I, I appreciate you working with that. Thank you.
Real quickly, Section 4.3B4, I got to get to it, it's on page 39.
4.3B4.
Yeah. I'm still.
Annual permission?
Where it, it says, submit annually to the Board of Finance a proposed capital budget for the ensuing fiscal year. That's fine, but I, I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, that what we were also going to do was that the first select person was going to, on an annual basis, maybe I'm missing it somewhere, submit a, and are you coming over here to show me something?
Just to make sure we're on the same page, literally.
This, right here.
Did we change it, Jim, after we sent this out?
Oh, we did.
We didn't change during the.
It's on page 39.
Yeah.
Mine's on 39, so, is that, let me just.
This is the revised line.
This is here?
No, it's not.
Four.
Present from time to time to the Board of Select persons for disposition to the Board of Finance.
The stuff we were given today is different.
A proposed capital.
So look on page 35 of what, of the big document.
Of this thing right here.
Does this say, present from time to time to the Board of Select persons for disposition to the Board of Finance, and our chairman, a proposed capital projects? So that's, that's the, that's, that's the waterfall chart thing, concept.
Well, that's, remember when we were talking at the last meeting about how it was hard to kind of explain to Attorney Medic, who does other towns, where we want to maintain, first of all, a five-year plan, because we want to be in line with statute, but how our one-year goes, right? We remember discussing about, we were a little worried about.
Yeah, I get that.
Approving a one-year capital plan, then we're sort of stuck with everything on that list. So we did discuss about the one-years and the five-years.
One thing, John, because you're talking about five-year capital.
No, I'm talking about the one-year.
I'm talking about five-year.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, because I thought we were going to do that still. Go ahead. I'm listening.
If you look at the following, Section Five, subsection Five, that, that addresses the five-year plan.
Okay. Wasn't, it wasn't on the thing that you gave me Saturday. So I'm done. You got it? Fine, thank you. It wasn't on Saturday's submission.
I think you're trying to play with the language, so it works.
That language was not on Saturday. That came out today as supplemental.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't see that at 3:00.
When we left, we were up in the air on that language.
You're good now, because I, because it's mentioned in 9.1 later on, so I just wanted, I'm fine, Mr. Flynn, if you need to go now, I don't need you anymore. So thank you very much.
Do you want to explain it a little bit, so that the Commission understands?
It's supposed to be needed.
I'm sorry to, to interrupt.
All right, yeah, let's, why don't we take it from the top here? Steve, why don't you go over these couple of change, the most recent couple of changes, so we're all literally on the same.
Take a look at the, the language, and I think the language is on the table, if people want to actually look at it.
Right.
But this is in 4.3.
Page 35 of.
Yeah. Yeah. 34 and 35. Is B4. So what we. So, what we've done here is, you may recall that you had voted to include capital projects or a capital plan in the budget. At the last meeting, we took it out of the budget process. And so, what we did here is we tried to take a look at what the reality was, how you deal with it in Fairfield. And so, paragraph 4 addresses that the First Select Person shall present from time to time, because there's no fixed time for the presentation, to the Board of Select Persons for disposition to the Board of Finance and RTM, proposed capital projects. So, it's the individual projects. There's not a, quote, "budget," per se. It is the projects. And I imagine the way you'd look at it at the end of a year is that was your budget, but you're going to go at it on an iterative basis. And I think that's what 4 does. 5 retains the concept of the five-year capital plan. The First Select Person has to prepare and maintain the five-year capital plan and submit that annually to the Board of Finance, to an update of the plan annually. Again, no date, it's, you know, it kind of follows the culture and protocols that you have right now. That's what those two sections do.
Thank you for clarifying that. I didn't see this new, thank you. Not new, but--
You guys work.
Yep. All right, thank you very much.
All right, so--
You want to move that?
I do want--
Can I just ask a question? What does that mean, present it to the Board of Select People, that's obvious, for disposition to the Board of Finance and RTM?
They ultimately have to approve projects. The two bodies, the Board of Finance and the RTM, approve capital projects.
So, you're only presenting it to the Board of Selectmen, and then included in the disposition is a presentation and--
And then the Board of Selectmen sends it to the Board of Finance.
Got it, so, all right, got it. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of that? Do we need a technical motion?
You should move the adoption of the substitute language in Section 4.3B4 and 5.
So moved. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Metola. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Metola.
Someone to my left or right.
You got that spelling done right, Chris.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else that we--
Should I go back to--
I do have one other that--
I do have one other that Mr. Flynn might have some thoughts on. It's in a different section.
Well, you're a very popular man today, Tom.
Yeah.
So, it's actually--
Not really.
It's actually in the budget timing. So, if we looked at Section 9.4--
Is this from Saturday or updated?
It's the same and hasn't changed. Right.
This is the submission of the budget, the proposed executive budget to the Board of Finance from the Board of Select.
Right.
What page is that? Use page numbers.
Page 84 in the document from this afternoon.
All right, awesome, thank you.
So, in this paragraph, 9.4A, it go, the executive budget to the Board of Finance, not later than the Fourth Monday in March. But our start date is March 1st, Monday in March, and I thought this date should move to the First Monday in April, to allow the joint meetings to take place in the three-week interim period, or four-week interim period. It's not going to change the overall budget timing, it's just going to allow the joint meetings to be conducted over an adequate period of time, to allow them to achieve the anticipated benefit that we've discussed.
In essence, you'd be extending the period from the one additional week that was already extended, and you'd now extend that period of time to two additional weeks in total from what was originally proposed by the commission.
I believe so, because I thought we pushed the start date to the First Monday in March.
That's correct. So, you gained another week there, and now you're proposing to--
Add another week?
Add another week.
Well, it's not really adding another week to the overall budget, it's just adding another week to allow the joint meetings to be effectively conducted.
But so, it would add two weeks to the joint meetings, basically.
Yes. In essence, you're taking a week away, then, from the Board of Finance, potentially.
Potentially, but they would be participating in the joint meetings during this entire time.
Right, but I'm unclear why you need two extra weeks. In my opinion, was the whole reason why we were trying to do joint presentations was to condense the amount of time needed, because we would all be together as opposed to the sort of Groundhog Day budget process.
So, yeah.
I mean, one week, I think adding back, so we literally have the same amount of time that we had before, but now we have the joint opportunity. I can't see why we would need an extra week. And obviously, I think you start pushing up against Dave's ability to get those tax bills out.
So, I appreciate what Commissioner Win's saying. So, I think the reality, what's going to happen is the chair of the Board of Finance, First Select Person, maybe a leader from the RTM, they're going to be in a room with the finance director, they're going to figure out the whole schedule, right? When meetings are going to happen. And if there's a need, right, if there's a need to extend it a little bit, for whatever reason, on any given year, there's a provision in here that says that the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen can alter the process a little bit. So, I think we should leave it alone, but Commissioner Win's concern is a good concern, but there's a mechanism to change that on any given year. We usually take about, when the Board of Finance has its meetings, it's about two and a half to three weeks we do it. I think even, and if we're having the joint meetings, I anticipate we'll have those two and a half, three weeks still to do it. And so, we should be okay, but if--
And the Board of Selectmen does it for three days--
Right.
--and the RTM, so--
So, I think we're okay there. I don't know, Tom, what do you think?
I want to support, yeah, no, John, I want to support what you're saying. And my goal here was to allow, for the exact same numbers of total weeks, John's been around long enough, I've been around long enough, there's times, depending on what's going on globally in the state, or maybe specifically with the town, where that schedule will be altered, and the number of meetings by each body will be altered by the leadership of those bodies to address specific issues. So, I think, you know, my overall concern was leaving in total the same number of weeks to allow them the flexibility to work together and get the budget approved. So, Commissioner Win, I thank you for bringing that up. I would just make sure that the flexibility is built in in the same amount of time annually.
Reminder, though, the wording here is "no later than," so that flexibility you're looking for, that Commissioner Metola and Selectman Flynn you're describing, can be built into the schedule that's developed by the people running it. It's just that the charter has the dates that are not later-than dates. This is the kind of the absolutely latest date. And any other schedule prior to that would be allowable under all of the arrangements.
You might be able to add a clause to, unless otherwise modified in accordance with 94, 9.4B, because the variation of procedure, I think variation of procedure is intended to allow for the modification of those dates. So, we could add that clause in there to make sure that's absolutely clear with all the fixed dates that we have. Right?
I mean, I think the timeline works. I mean, you know, to Selectman Flynn's point, the first year with, you know, the global pandemic hitting right after the Board of and voted to budget, we still didn't extend the time. We still got it done in the same amount of time. It was a lot of angst and aggravation, but we got it done in the same amount of time. And I don't believe in 2008, obviously, I wasn't, I don't know if you were on the Board of Finance then, but I don't think that the Board of, the administration then took any more time than they normally did, they just dealt with what was coming at them within the time that they had, which is a considerable amount of time. I mean, obviously, it's not, you know, there's a lot of time that leads up to that, building the budget that the administration does. But I think it's enough time for everybody to do a thorough review and have the joint meetings.
Any other thoughts on this? Okay. Anything else before, I see the time has flown by, so I think Selectman Flynn needs to sign off or thereabouts.
I do, and my apologies for that, but is there anything else that I can be of any clarification on, from my perspective?
Jim is raising his hand, Attorney Paul.
Yeah, I think it might benefit to have you participate our way in on the contract language, which is in what section, Steve, sorry? It's in Section 4.2B1.
And there's deletion in there.
Right. So, in Section 4.2--
2.
4.2B1, under contracts, there were three--
This is the document that you got on Saturday.
So, there was, there was, there were three subsections to that subsection 1, A, B, and C. It was agreed that we would change language to $50,000 from $100,000 and exclude expressly, I believe, contracts made on behalf of the Board of Eds. So, I think that's pretty much established. What I recommended, based on errata and previous changes to the charter that have been approved and discussed considerably, is removing that subsection B, because subsection B now is superfluous. It has no purpose, and it relates back to the time when the Board of Select Persons reviewed all contracts over $10,000. We're not talking about those contracts in subsection A. The current charter, as members of the Board of Select Persons know all too well, every single contract above $10,000 had to come before them for their approval, and that has been removed from the charter. So, this section has no real purpose as it related back to that original provision, which is being removed.
So-- Just to clarify, the one I have here has a, it's a subsection A that's all crossed out. That's the one. The Select Person shall have the power to delegate their authority, that's the one, right?
And that is different from the version that came before you at the last meeting, and this change was made subsequent to that meeting, based on my opinion that it is superfluous now, and if anything could lead to confusion, because it refers to review and approval by the Board of Select Persons over those contracts, which is no longer the case.
Yeah, if it's superfluous, I don't have a problem taking it out. Obviously.
It's just not relevant.
No, and it should have been taken out--
It's an accident.
--when that provision was approved, we just didn't pick it up. Because what would it apply to today? It wouldn't apply to anything.
Right.
So, I mean, if you left it in, it would--
It's a stray, you know, it's an orphan provision, basically.
An orphan provision. Well, in one breath, you're telling them to approve it, and then the other one, you're telling them that they don't. That's essentially what happens if you leave it in, right? One sentence says, "Do it," the other one says, "You don't have to." I'm oversimplifying that, but that's in the essence of, just take it out.
That's the point.
That's the point. It should have been taken out when the--
All right, so do you need a motion to remove it?
No, I think, I consider it's errata in that sense, but--
As long as everybody understands it. If you want to do a motion, that's fine, too, but--
No.
I just wanted Commissioner, sorry, Selectman Flynn to chime in if he wanted to on that, but I believe that he's, if you're still there, Tom--
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I am, and I'm fine with that, and I thank you for bringing it up.
So, that's the only other item that I think that Selectman Flynn would want--
Was he okay with the town administrator, Scott?
Well, you, I don't know.
That's up to Tom.
Let me just put it this way, Selectman Flynn, did you have occasion, was this circulated to, yes, so did you have occasion to review those items that were flagged? Do you have anything else that you'd like to--
Yeah, I reviewed. No, I think I'm fine right now with what I've seen in there.
Okay. All right, then, thank you very much for your time this evening. I mean, I'm not kicking you off by any means, I just want to be mindful of your schedule, so--
No, I appreciate that.
Okay, good. Well, then--
And once again, let me, let me just extend, if you might, Mr. Chairman, let me just extend all my time, my thanks and appreciation to the board for their many, many months of service and hard work, and, for lack of a better word, brain damage in doing all the heavy lifting on this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, then, getting back to our best-laid plan of going Article to my article, Counselor, you have seven minutes to get through the rest of the articles.
Yes, sir.
Article 2.
All right. I'm done. So, Article 2, there's really not much in the substance of Article 2, mainly fixes. If you've looked, I don't know, the town attorney is very interested in the charts, the first of the charts is in 2.3. I hope it works out. We now have the 30 members of the RTM, which was just approved a few moments ago. You'll see language in the same section in 2.3B. There was a provision that was left out, inadvertently left out, in the earlier version that states that RTM members shall be eligible for reelection. It may not have been inadvertent, because it's just assumed, and when I was doing the edits, I left that out, and if people want to keep it in, it's here in this section that makes it clear that they are eligible for reelection, even though that is not necessary to state. I also, in this section, now, there was some back and forth regarding, I combined the First Select Person with the Board of Select Persons in defining the date of the election. I thought that was okay. I know you guys wanted to keep it separate in some places. I thought this was a place where it could be combined, where they all have the same election date. I didn't think that made a difference. In subsection D, we add RTM to the commencement date, commencement date of terms of office for elected officials and the RTM. They were, since they're not included in the term elected town officials, they should be added in there, because they are elected and they start their terms of office at the same time. The most substantive change is in 2.6D. The only difference that I think I made here, and I think we did make another change, let me just see. Yes? There is a change that you should move on today. I broke it up, the town attorney, when he wrote this section, wrote it in one basic paragraph. I split it up to kind of describe the breakdown of how it works, the role of the remaining members of the RTM, then it moves to the role of town clerk. Then it moves to the role of town clerk and other elected officials, and, and we need to add RTM members. Remember, RTM members are elected, but they're not in the definition of other elected officials. I think this is another vice chair find, as he was going through the document. I want to give credit where credit is due, and so we really should add that. That's the only change that I made to that section, other than splitting it up. And I didn't ask the town attorney whether he had any problem with the way I split it up. I did it mainly because I thought it clarified by having subsection three what the term of the replacement member is, because it's kind of silent throughout the body.
Commissioner Wen?
Yeah, if we look at, if we go back to 2.3, 2.3A, that table that you've put in there, red straw voter shows up there, but they're an elected state official, I believe, not a town official. The original charter working with has a paragraph that describes registrar voters, and we don't have a 5.2 in this current version. 5.2 is actually the JPs, the justices of peace.
Yes, five, it would be 2.3C4.
And the justices of peace are 5...
5.2.
5.2.
C5. So it's 2.3C5 is the reference to the registrar voters. They're established by general statutes, but they are very often listed in charters as, as town officials, because they serve the town, even though they're mandated by the state, the same way the Board of Education is mandated by the state.
So you could leave them in the table, fix the cross-reference to the paragraph that refers to them.
2.3C5, yeah. Thank you. Good catch.
And you adjust the justices of peace paragraph to 5.2, which you have in the charter.
I got it.
Yep, okay.
I fixed that as well. All right. Back to the, thank you, Commissioner. Your erratas came in, I will look at them, and they, with permission of the body, we will fix them even after today. We will fix those erratas before they go to the RTM. So we were looking at...
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen.
Please.
The Board of Selectmen.
Please don't send this to the RTM.
Oh, that's right. The Board, sorry, my God. The Board of Selectmen. We were looking at the section on, the vacancies, subsection D. And we need to add the RTM members, too, the other elected town officials who make these choices, so...
To answer your question, I'm fine with the breakdown and the titles that the commission is, it seems to work.
I like it.
All right.
2.6 what?
This is 2.6D.
Vacancies.
Vacancies on the Board of Selectmen, select persons, and it's really sub-paragraph two, both in the title and the body. The way the procedure works is the other elected town officials get to make the choice. We needed to add the RTM.
Just broke it up.
Yeah. I broke it up, that's the only change, but we need to add the RTM members.
Identify the RTM members as being those who would participate in such a vacancy filled by elected town officials and RTM members.
So...
Can we do a motion for that?
I think you should do a motion on that, just the addition of the RTM members, somebody.
I move that we add per our vice chairs. Well, I'm going to let you make the motion.
I move, I move that we add RTM members into four, where are we?
2.6D.
D2.
Second that. Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks of the body.
Thank you. Last change in this section is, you'll find in errata, I just wanted to point it out, is that a, in subsection 2.8B3, that line on the number of candidates in districts for RTM members was left out, and it is now restored. There's no need for a motion. It should have been there in the document that went to the RTM a month ago, month and a half ago.
It went to the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen, a month, a month and a half ago, so I have given the RTM a promotion here. Okay, everybody okay with that? All right. Now, we're in Article three, we acted on the, unless you want to vote again, acted on the 30 to 40 number issue. You'll see in 3.3, another line that has been brought back in, that, regarding the powers of the moderator, being similar to the powers of moderators for town meetings, under the Connecticut general statutes. That was inadvertently left out of the draft when this went forward. I just want to take a look at one other thing here. Where's this at?
Is that taken out from the...
This.
Right.
So this should be in here.
No, that, that should go out. That was, based, that was superfluous language, but you just haven't brought it. I think it needs to be brought in.
Yeah, it's here, it's crossed out.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so it reflects it.
It's reflected in the current version, everyone's received.
Every, it's received in the one that they got on Saturday and today. That deletion is there, and that addition is there. You'll see that we deleted in 2, 3.3G, the parliamentarian. We also deleted 3.4B, the open meeting requirement for the RTM. Again, that was the request of select person Lefkowitz, but it means open meetings are dealt with in one place at the beginning of the document. You'll see a couple of minor changes, they're, they're useful changes, so they're not minor. 3.4D and E, I wanted to make sure, based on the request that was made by a member of the RTM, that, that it's clear that you can adopt your notice standards for public hearings and meeting notice by rule. You can establish a rule that has to be consistent with state law, consistent with the charter, and even stricter than either of those, you can do it, but it makes it clear they can establish that rule within the body itself. The, the other change, significant changes, we changed the time in 3.6 for the, for the voting hours for the, for the referendum, and that's it for Article three. Article four, if there's no, no questions on Article three, there, there was some consolidation of language in 4.1, not significantly. We went over the stuff, the section on contracts a moment ago, so I won't repeat it, 4.2B1. We knocked out that section of the document. Minor change on the advisory committees' task forces. We made it clear that it has to be a concern of the town, not a concern of the Board for those purposes. We made the change a few moments ago in 4.3, four and five. Those are the changes on the capital projects and capital five-year plan. So we caught a lot of that earlier. In section, if there was a crowd here, the applause would go up in a moment. 4.3C3, we eliminated the mediation and resolution clause from the document. And then, if you go down two paragraphs to F, we changed the town administrator to chief administrative officer, and we added language in there, and we, it was in your edition on Saturday. Are there any questions? No one has raised anything by private email at this point. Is everybody okay with the section on CAO, the way it's currently drafted? Since there are no questions, I'll move on. 4.5, there's just a minor addition, and that's it for section, for Article four. Article five. No significant changes. There's kind of an editorial change in 5.3C that simply refers to the section we just discussed about replacement members of the Board of, of Select Persons. Article 5.7 reflects the deletion of the amendment of any previously adopted master plans, since master plans are not the current nomenclature.
There's a few paragraphs below the one you're just referencing that does say master plan. Did we take P O C D out of the two or three paragraphs, paragraphs three, four, and seven in that section?
Oh, yeah.
Oh. Most definitely.
Absolutely. Three, four, and seven. Got it.
What's that going to say there now?
It'll say P O C D, Plan of Conservation Development.
Of all new public ways, buildings, bridges.
So we'll just, just do a find and replace in this area for master plan and change it.
Yeah.
We voted on that already, so...
Yes, so that's, that's in errata at this point.
That was a statement, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Wen, for that. Six point, we're now in Article six. I am galloping, galloping along at the charge of the chair. 6.1A, we deleted the town attorney from having a requirement of being an elector. We added the language to make sure that committees' task forces are not covered by the single office requirement, are not prevent, you know, not covered by that prohibition or restriction. In 6.2, we, there's no change, just a reference to the appointing authority. We kind of, this is where we kind of define appointing authority within the body of the document, so you see some of the changes related to that internal definition in this section. And I think that's it in terms of substance in that section. Most of the others are just typos. 7.1 in Article seven. Again, I don't know if everybody's looked at the charts. I haven't heard from the town attorney as to whether I pass the arts and crafts component of this program. But in seven, there are not a lot of changes. I'm taking a look through quickly here. I think we'll probably see the change when we get to the... Oh, I did, I flipped, I, I did go through and flipped around regulations and rules. Since regulation is a defined term, wherever an agency has the authority to promulgate regulations, capital R, regulations, a form of law, I just flipped that ahead of their rules. So I flipped rules and regulations to make sure that people understood that one of them is a legal process, the other is more of an internal bylaw, rule, process for them, so you'll see that flip in that section.
7.15D, we're going to talk about.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. 7.15D. Again, that is, the special exemption language was inadvertently left out of the document. It's a section, the town attorney did talk to the tax collector today, and it's a provision that the tax collector would like to see remain in the provision in the charter.
Just curious, what does it mean?
Yeah, it, it really has to do with the delinquency list, and the paragraph above it. Apparently, there are state statutes that speak to that, and this is old existing language from the charter that predates those statutes, and again, they would like to keep that provision as it is, as it has been. What, what happened in the rewrite was that there were two or three paragraphs below it, which were irrelevant, and those were taken out by this commission based on the tax collector's recommendations, and this was supposed to stay in, but it got...
This is essentially a grandfather provision we're keeping.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I spoke to the tax collector just today about this, just to make sure.
Do we know, oh, sorry, you asked your question.
No, 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 I thought we were moving on, I have a different question.
Do we know, is there a list of exemptions or people that are grandfathered that were, like, what? You said that this is a grandfather of exemptions.
No, the, 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 the language itself is a grandfather exemption of state statute.
Okay.
And the language exists in the current charter.
And the language exists in the current charter.
Yeah.
That's right.
When we were taking out the...
It was inadvertently taken out with the two preceding paragraphs that were taken out upon request of the tax collector and approved by this body.
I guess my question is, is that maybe there are special acts that give some type of exa, this is regarding taxes that the town collects, correct?
Yes, and I believe has specifically to do with the list, listing the delinquency list.
What happens every year, the tax collector comes to the Board of Finance, presents us a list of delinquent taxes that, that he can't collect on. And under the state statute, and probably under the charter, the town has the ability to, I guess, extinguish that list, or, or, they do something. It's, they can still get the money if something happens, but I forget exactly what the process is.
Okay, thank you.
I've edited with the tax collector.
In a crew's interest.
I think it has something to do with when they audit. They're audited, they're audited.
But is it all set by a public?
Apparently, me, so, but moving on, let's go.
Can I, can I ask, can I go back to 7.4 first? Sorry, thank you. So that, we got rid of the treasurer as ex officio to the library board, and we made that person the CFO. Do we have to add that under the CFO duties, or that's not necessary?
It's uncritical.
Okay.
And I did take it out of the, at your, at your request, and appropriately, we had not taken it out of the treasurer section.
Okay, but it doesn't need to go into the CFO section, that's not necessary. Okay, thank you.
That's for, okay.
Article eight, unless there's anything else, I'm sorry.
There isn't something on, on Article eight when you're there.
Okay.
Again, I'm looking at it quickly here. Commissioner Matilla, what is your question?
So I...
It's in this article, so...
Yeah, on B, 8.1B, permanent, permanent bodies appointed by the Board of Select Persons. Maybe I missed this. It says Department of Public Works? What is that?
That's the interesting point.
That, they don't appoint. You, the first select person appoints the, the part, the head of the public works.
If you see in, right here, should this be moved to Article seven? And I didn't raise it at the last meeting. When I was doing the drafting, when I was doing the consolidation, what was puzzling is that you had these commissions that are tied to departments, and I get that, and that's okay, so that this section deals with commissions and departments, but the Department of Public Works is an orphan.
There's no commission either.
There's no commission tied to it, and that's why I had, thank you for bringing it up. That's why I had the note on the side, should I just move this into the department-only section and take it out of this section?
So my understanding is, the first select person appoints the director of public works, period, right? There's no commission, there's nothing else, and that's what the charter should say. It says it later on, but this should be eliminated.
And the director of public works is dealt with in 7.6. I just think the content of, of, what is the section here? 8.6 should be in Title VII.
Yeah, that's correct, right.
It has no business in the section. I'm glad, I'm glad you actually read my note.
I did.
I came to the same conclusion, because I forgot to bring it up, so.
And also, and also Department of Health. I think your same note, your note had the same question about the Department of Health as opposed to, the Board of Health would remain here as a board, but the Department of Health as a department...
And that's the question, because in some cases in this section, you do have the departments tied, but then they're not in the other section. So, you know, I could talk to Jim, we could talk about it and see if we want to just flip it around. To me, that would be not quite an errata, would be a, just a kind of an editorial fix.
The other approach is just leave it where it is to not risk the fear of unintended consequences, as Chair, Vice Chair Brogan has referenced several times.
Yeah, that's what I would say, 'cause once we start moving departments at this point, and they've been like that right under the current Charter.
These are in the current Charter.
So, I mean, maybe one, Department of Public Works, maybe, but.
I think Department of Public Works, there's no commission attached, just move the language, leave the other one here.
As long as we're sure that's not tied in anywhere else.
I don't know about that. I think you should leave it where it is, only because I say that, um, the Department of Public Works, you know, um, is involved with WPCA. They're involved with Solid Waste and Resale. They attend, um, the engineering department attends the bike and pet committees. So they kind of are attached, they don't approve the.
They're ex officio.
Right, director, but they are engaged with those department, those boards.
I, I have no.
So, so all, all I'm saying is, this, this section says permanent bodies appointed by the Board of Select Persons. It says Department of Public Works. First select person's correct about all those things, but the Board of Select Persons don't, there's, the Board of Select Persons don't appoint the Department of Public Works, right? It makes.
Right.
And it's in the old Charter, you're saying, right? The current Charter.
This is literally not changing.
I remember you bringing this up.
How about, how about an asterisk?
Put an asterisk next to it.
How about an asterisk next to that, or some footnote saying to that thing?
Yeah, W T.
So. Leave it where it is.
Leave it where it is.
Well, do a, uh.
Brilliant solution.
Do a 2022 Charter revision.
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
It's working. The department's already there, so it's already been.
Yeah, but it's a good catch. I mean, I caught it, too, and I, and I just didn't know what to do with it. Leave it where it is.
Yes.
That's not making sense.
But I, I would go with the Brogan theory, you know, if it's, don't fool around with it. I'd screw it up.
Yeah.
That's the treasurer theory, too.
Got it, got it, yes.
No, no more.
I call it the Brogan theory.
Eight dash twelve, uh, we, we didn't delete the commission, we just moved it.
Something they're gonna ask.
The proper place where it belongs, which is now eight dash, 8.15. We made the changes requested by the library board. You'll see them, um, specified here. And, and that's, um, that's where we are with that. Almost done with that. Okay, and then Article IX, we had discussions earlier. Um, I want to, I just noticed something as I was going through it earlier. There's a, there's a sentence at the end of 9.1, which refers to the annual, um, um, capital budget. We're not gonna have an annual capital budget, we, uh, prepare capital projects, um, uh, in accordance with the sections that we talked about earlier before.
Yes.
And B5, so I have to make that change, um, to take the kind of reference to a budget out and simply have the reference to the projects and the five-year capital plan that we discussed earlier today. So that is, uh, one additional change. I don't think that, I think really is a Scribner's, um, or an errata that can be fixed. And I did, I want to point out that we did make it clear in subsection B, 9.3B2A, that the Chair of the Board of Finance presides over the joint meetings. We discussed the dates earlier. Oh, I wanted to point out one additional thing in 9.6. We have left out language on the RTM role. They may hold meetings, uh, uh, to review the budget. Well, I had the words to review the budget were left out. I think it's pretty clear that that's what this chapter's all about, but we put the language back in as it is in the current Charter, so that you know dispute whatsoever about that function.
Could we just go back to 8.6A for one second? You dropped one, you dropped the word streets from 8.6A. I was just curious why we dropped that.
The word streets?
Streets.
At the request of Public Works, I think. Uh, they had put that in, they replaced it with highway, I think?
Okay.
That was their request. I did not ask them the basis for that change. I could, before it goes to the Board of Select Persons, and if they don't agree, they could always reject that deletion and restore the language.
Not, not to belabor, but the old one had public streets, highways, bridges in the current.
They took out streets.
Maybe a highway includes street, but I don't know. I would think the town attorney would have that to tip of his fingers.
That'll save a lot of pain.
There goes the snow clearance from my street.
That's exactly why I brought it up. It's such a hot fucking topic.
Wow, we just solved our budget problem.
I'll, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I'll just, that's fine, but I, I think it's.
Yeah, we'll just take a look at that. But other than that, I think, whoops, I think that is it.
Can I ask? I'd like to have a sidebar with counsel here. This is 5.3C.
Yeah.
I don't know if, if you made this change or not. It's, it really is just a errata, but the vacancy, I had accepted provided for in 2.6D.
I got that.
That you did get that?
I'll double check that.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
Okay.
Uh, let me just check it, 5.3C. Accept is provided in 2.6D with respect to the Board of Select.
I'm sorry.
Got it. On the, uh, Jim, you had a question on 10.4 on the periodic review of the Charter, and we didn't make any of those changes. Were you? This is the section of the Charter, um, it's technically not, well, it was before us, I guess, um, for, um, errata issues, um, where we, no more than every 10 years, the Board of Select Persons shall consider appointing. It's not a mandatory Charter revision, it's a consideration of Charter revision. Were, were you concerned about the language there? I don't know if that, um...
Yeah, which, uh?
10.4. Not later than April 3, April of 2032. One of the questions you had raised was if they did a Charter revision in four years, six years, as opposed to waiting to 2032, would you have an automatic reset? And my response would be you could either say that there would be, or when the commission does it, they could start the 10 years, um, again at the beginning, uh, you know.
I think it's the intention when, when this was approved to have it reset. In other words, it's not just locked into 10 years in that specific date, but any time there is a Charter revision or review commission created, whether it's in 10 years, eight years, four years, or five years, this 10-year mandatory review period would restart or reset. That's all. I, I think that's the intention here, but I think that the language can be cleaned up a bit to reflect that.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Good, I just wanted to.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Good. I hate to go back to this, but actually, for my fellow commissioners, in the chart in 2.3A, one thing that was there before, I think they actually had the number of people in each position.
I was told to take that out.
I know, and I, that's why I don't want to just go back and back and forth, but I'm thinking if somebody going through this, just trying to know, how big is the Board of Finance? Um, they'd have to go, they'd have to start counting through here, or I guess maybe it's in the subdivision section.
That's why I put the internal reference in, because that tells you, but I have no problem putting it back.
I, that's why I ask. I've been looking at it so much, I don't know.
It just remind, what, what did you call me? The, the.
Arts and crafts.
Arts and craft person? I just thought that it read more easy or easier to the eye. And then you.
I agree.
You're directed to that particular section, if you want to know more. But that, that was my view, I, it's up to the, the commission, but.
What page is that?
Twelve.
Twelve of, of today.
Right back to the beginning.
That's a good point, that people, as long as when they go to that section, they can figure it out. Yeah.
It's like a table of contents.
Yeah, okay.
You know?
Fair enough.
That's it.
I was still on my question.
Any other issues that, um, the commissioners wanted to bring up?
Do we get the first hot-off-the-bress copy when this, if this passes?
Well, we're gonna go through logistics and next steps, but.
No, I mean in November. Signed by Attorney Ned Mednick autograph.
No, 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 I think, I think it's the town clerk who should sign it, and the, and the first select person, that's, those are the signatures you want. Or John Hancock.
So, um.
They should all sign it, like the Declaration.
The Declaration. We'll see, maybe John Sullivan will sign it for us.
Oh.
We've voted on these kind of piecemeal. I think it's probably appropriate at this time to take a vote on these recom, our responses to the resolution that was, um, submitted to us by the.
Motion to approve your final report. This is your final report.
Okay, wow, this is big. So I would entertain a motion to approve our final report.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Iakono, seconded by Vice Chairman Brogan. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed or abstaining? I see none, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Bravo.
In terms of just some cleanup, uh, we now, this now goes back to the Board of Selectmen. They have some time to, uh.
Yeah, they have 15 days.
15 days.
After we send it over to them, I'll get it to the, I'll clean it up. Are you going to have a special meeting, a brief special meeting?
That was one of the things that I wanted to ask about. Apparently, um, we are, we get to have a bonus meeting?
Does that come with bonus pay?
Yes, double overtime. So that's for the sole purposes, and it will be marked so on the agenda, to approve the minutes that are due, correct? Five sets of minutes that.
Plus tonight's.
Plus tonight's, yeah, that includes tonight, so I'm parroting well. That we will do, hold via WebEx, and it should be a very brief meeting, yeah. And then in terms of continuing erratas, but, and I want to be clear about this. So that would be kind of in, in the spirit of number 23 on the resolution of continuing to reprove, uh, I mean, all our erratas and Scribner's corrections, you will entertain those from the commission members, ones you find on your own, Attorney Baldwin, and any members of the public, if you write in and you have found things from the, from the draft that was posted, certainly send those in. There have been some great catches and finds, and they're, they're much appreciated. It's a group effort, so those will be taken into consideration and incorporated, and correct me if I'm wrong, up until the time the Board of Selectmen takes their, their final approval. Okay. Any clarification or questions on that from the commissioners? Anything else from the commissioners or for selectwoman?
I would like to, once again, I know I've said it a lot. Uh, I want to thank, sincerely thank you. I know you had a tough time, um, and I know you've disagreed with each other, and, but you did really good work. You really did. And I, I want to thank Pam and John for their hard work on putting that together, and, and I know it's not easy to put so much effort into something that doesn't make it all cross the finish line, but that doesn't mean, um, you should stop trying. I always say never quit. Uh, I, I really sincerely appreciate all your hard work. Yeah, I know this was not easy. You didn't have to agree to do this. This has been challenging. You haven't always been treated with, um, the utmost respect, but you've worked very, very hard, and I sincerely appreciate all of your efforts, and I appreciate the two attorneys for their help. I know it wasn't, uh, easy for either one of you as well, especially the town attorney, who's got his plate full with a whole bunch of town issues, and so this was a lot of extra, um, effort. It was, um, it was. So I sincerely thank you.
Thanks.
Do you want to pick a date?
Sure.
If you do it this week, I can give you a final cleanup of the Charter to look at as well, but.
Okay. Do we want to pick a date for this five-minute meeting? When, next week?
I would prefer next week.
Okay, next week? The eighth works for me. How does the eighth work for everyone else? Monday, the eighth.
Have all the minutes done by then?
I'm gonna be away, but don't let me hold you up.
Can you dial in for five minutes?
It's a workday, it's a work.
Virtual.
It's just.
It's virtual.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so what time, is it, is it six o'clock? Is that okay, or should we do it?
Could we do it first thing in the morning? Is anybody opposed to that?
No, I'm.
Then I don't have to.
Well, I don't mind doing it at like nine o'clock. Can we do it for virtual? Just for approving minutes, that's it, right?
Yeah.
That would be lovely.
Does that work for you, taking lawyers?
Me.
Okay, so. Eight, eight, at nine AM. Five-minute meeting.
Promise?
When is, we don't have a Board of Selectmen meeting date yet set up.
Does it matter if we do it before or after that?
It doesn't have to be after that. I mean, unless we're gonna make changes in the document, I think we're done.
No, no, we voted, yeah. Prue, thank you so much, as always. Do the best.
Can I just thank Chairman Caffarelli for leading us through all this and having the patience of Joe? So thank you.
He does have the patience of Joe.
And a great sense of humor.
He does, and that's very important.
It is. Well, on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, moved by Pam, seconded by Marlene. All those in favor? All right, thank you all.